At 7:00 PM, Busiris City Council Regular Meeting, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
McKiever.
Here.
Myers.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
Young.
Here.
You have before you the minutes of the October 17, 2023 Regular Council Meeting.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. You also have the October 30, 2023 Special Council Meeting Minutes.
I make a motion with approval, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Potter, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. You have the October 30 Special Council Meeting, the second one that night.
So moved.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Sherrick, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We have the August 24, 2023 Minutes before you for the Advent Committee.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Ms. Sherrick, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. You also have the April 7 of 2022. Wow.
I make a motion to accept.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak, Mr. Long had requested five minutes and he also has provided a briefing. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Long.
Good evening, everybody. Just for brevity purposes, I wrote my concerns out on here. The bottom half has to do with water. I did talk to the Council President and she said that my best move would be to take that to a committee meeting, which I'm glad to do. So the only discussion I have is, or comments I have is on the first item here about some money that's owed. I'm not even sure if this is the right meeting for that, but if you can help me with that as far as if this is it or if I should go someplace else, just to save time.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and just present and we can go from there?
Okay, very good. All right. Number one, how do I receive reimbursement from the city for two previous tenant wire bills that were charged erroneously? And the reason they were erroneous, they were in error. Both tenants during their time in that house had paid a partial payment, the city accepted that partial payment, and that throws that thing out the window as soon as they do that because I'm not party to that agreement and that would have stopped their water, there wouldn't have been a bill anymore, yada, yada. And so at the time when I put this together along with on B, B as in Bravo, about the lawn mowing, similar situation, I wasn't aware of it. They came out and spent supposedly $175, charged me for $175, stuck it on my taxes. I never got notice. And so at the time, Mr. Ratliff, I made him aware of it, gave him all the names, numbers, and all the stuff, and he never got back with me. I let it sit because there was a transition in law directors. I met with Mr. Gurnett, pled my case, gave him the same information, hadn't heard from him, and I said, I'll just leave it at that. But the bottom line is it's still owed money and so I'm just going to guess this probably isn't the place to get that resolved, but I don't know where it is.
I'm going to venture to say that this is Mr. Gurnett's purview.
I'd like to speak with the Water Department about the utility bills. And I guess your argument is that if the city takes a partial payment, then the landowner can never be responsible for any past water bills.
When the regime at that time, 20 something years ago or whatever, that was the agreement at that time. You know, as long as they're paying in full, there's no back owed because if a family of four has a $100 water bill, they pay $10 next month, now we have a $190 owed. I didn't agree to that, but I'm still, the landlords are the end result to paying this 30 days after they don't pay their final bill and that's not correct. That wasn't what I agreed to. That's another reason why I'm trying to get a copy of the ordinance, okay, so that I can read this for myself, see what was said 25, 30 years ago or whatever.
Did you get the attachment that I sent to you yesterday? The ordinance attachment?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't go through the detail because it's a little bit cumbersome, but once again, I thought that would probably get brought up at a committee meeting and I'll have time to prepare for it then.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I mean, other landlords have come in and we have spoken about this issue, but currently under the current codified ordinance, landlords are responsible for tenants' water bills. And I understand that we've had several landlords come in and express their displeasure with that, but that's currently what the codified ordinance requires.
Okay. I can't speak for the previous landlords. If I had to take a wild guess, they probably got wore out, okay? And I don't expect to be wore out. So I want to go from A to Z, get this thing resolved one way or the other, and everybody's going to live semi-happy, so. There's also the issue, while we're discussing this with the law director, the lawn mowing. When I figured out it was on my taxes, that's the first notice I got that it was on, you know, that I had a bill at all. And I'd gone up, spoke to the mayor at the time, then Kelly, and she was not able to produce a certified letter to me that, oh, you've got yard disease mode. And so out the window it goes too. And that's basically what I told Ratliff and also Mr. Gurnett, and so here we are.
Okay. All right. Are you going to come tomorrow to talk to the committee?
I can. You tell me what time the meeting is.
6 o'clock is when the committee?
At 7?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock is when committees start. I don't know, do we have an agenda for it? Who's going first?
Service is going first.
Service is going first, so it'll be at 6 o'clock.
That'll be fine. No, that'll be a good meeting to talk about water, it won't have anything to do with the lawn mowing bill. So that's a different committee or whenever I have to go there?
There will be meeting.
Yeah, all committees will be here.
Okay, okay.
And they go in and out.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes. You asked and then you looked down and I raised my hand and you didn't see it, so I had to shout.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I'm here, Tom McNeely bought the Swan Rubber Building and he's been over two years now.
Sir, you need to state your address first, sorry.
No problem.
Tell us who, for the record, who you were and your address.
It's Douglas Wilson, 220 Home Circle. And Tom McNeely bought the Swan Rubber Building and it's been a couple of years and he has not been allowed to open and put his flea markets and his craft shows in there. He also has a couple hundred pinball machines and the largest one of that is, it's called the Hercules, I think, and the balls on that are the size of pool balls. So it's, there's only 19 of those in the whole world and we got one of them right here beside us and we can't play it because he has to get open. He has gone to the architect in Mansfield and he's paid him most of what he owes him now. He has another business in another city and he's paying out of that to make this go. But just if you could possibly work out some agreement with him that he could open and then have things that he would have to do in a certain timeframe. When he came to the Board of Zoning Appeals, one of the members made the remark that the building would probably need $2 million worth of work hard before he should come to them. If he put $2 million into that, the county auditor would love that. I don't know what kind of money that would raise his taxes on. He paid $49,900 for it and he's put about $100,000 into it so far. But just a suggestion, put it into committee and try to work with him and work with the mayor, the new mayor, and see if we can get him up and running and then take the proceeds from the sales and so forth to help him pay for making it go. I think it would go. He's also thinking about putting a miniature golf, puck putt golf course up on that second floor. And that would be in the future, but that would be something that would keep the kids off the streets and give them something to do. And if you have any questions, call me anytime at office and so forth. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
That building houses the world's largest manufacturer of private air guns.
Anybody else? All right, Communications and Petitions. Do we have any? Do you want to read this though or? I can. Okay. I did receive a letter from the mayor. Dear Council President, I am writing to reiterate my request that the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board be reconstituted as all terms have expired. After a thorough search, the clerk was unable to find any documentation of the council approving nominations for the board in the past four years. I am pleased to nominate the following citizens to the Stormwater Utility Appeals Board: Denny Tyner, Anthony Sheets, Craig Orweller, and Roger Brown. I am grateful to these individuals for their willingness to serve our community in its important role. Thank you for consideration, Mr. Jeffrey Surratt. May I have a motion to accept and file?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Do we have any other correspondence that needs to be read? Standing Committee Reports, Plating?
Nothing at this time.
Public Lands and Buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Health and Safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic Development?
No report.
Service?
No report.
Is there anybody here from the Traffic Commission?
Nope.
All right, Reported City Officers. Mayor's Report. Last Friday, we celebrated our second Arbor Day of 2023 with two plantings. The first planting was at Allmiller in the Kids Kingdom, near the Kids Kingdom, and we replaced a diseased pear tree with an October Glory Maple Tree, which will last for many years. The original tree was planted in honor of victims of suicide and the recent planting was also in their honor. A short ceremony was held with representatives from the Adam H. Board, and this can be viewed on our Facebook page. The second tree was planted at Allmiller Park and is part of the Memorial Tree Program. The family of longtime resident and former council member Norma Hill purchased a tree to be planted next to her husband Norman's Memorial Tree. The historical Schein's Art Park signs have been in production over, well over a year. Were recently installed at the park, stop by and take a look. Busiris has a rich and interesting history and this is a story to tell future generations about Schein's Theater and the recently developed park. Mayor Roger Moore and Joe Armbruster were the driving forces, but plenty of others had a hand in this beautiful addition to downtown Busiris. Finally, we honor all veterans of our armed service, of our armed forces this week. On Saturday, please thank a veteran for their service to our country. There will be a Veterans Day Hall of Fame induction ceremony at Busiris High School on Saturday at 7:00 PM, and this is always a moving event, even if you are not a veteran. And he would like to refer renaming of a city street to Plating. Do I have a motion to refer renaming of a city street to Plating?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Safety Service Director Report. On Friday, November 10, City Hall offices will be closed. Trash pickup for Friday, November 10, 2023 will be Monday, November 23. Please have your trash out by 7:00 AM.
Monday the 13th. He said 23rd.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. I'll reread that. On Friday, November 10, City Hall offices will be closed. Trash pickup for Friday, November 10, 2023 will be Monday, November 13. Please have your trash out by 7:00 AM. Driven excavating has finished the sewer work on Hill and Bland Street from Tiffin to Pleasant Hill Drive. Jeff Dunn and Dylan Wyatt from McKiever and Associates are doing final walkthrough this week. We held a Board of Control to award the Dudley Reconstruction Project to Underground Utilities. We will be sending out letters to the area residents for a meeting Wednesday, December 6 at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers. The Unger Park Allmiller Service Road Project will start in a couple of weeks. This project will be completed in May of 2024. The Stetser Road 602 Water Line is planned to be finished by the end of November. Leaf pickup will continue going from the south end of town to the north end and start over. As we have this nice weather, our crew is staying over to get leaves when they're dry and not wet or frozen. We are planning to go out to bid for water taps to be installed at the Busiris Nevada Water Line, Phase 1 Stetser Road, and Parter Road for all residents who didn't sign up. The Sulphur Springs Water Line is being reviewed by EPA and ODOT. The plan is to be out to bid, what else? The plan is to be out to be for bid by the end of November. The new aggregation rate for gas is .584 per cubic foot through December of 2026. Our gas supplier is Constellation. The phone number to enroll if you're not on it now is 855-713-4486 to enroll. If you're already on it, you will automatically be re-enrolled. Our electric aggregation is from AEP, energy rate at .0524 and it ends January 2025. The bathrooms and porta-pots at Allmiller and Lyons Field are now closed for the winter and Omni Fiber has hired a new contractor to finish up the sections that have been started. Mr. Law Director?
I have no reports yet, thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
Happy November, Council and citizens of Busiris. I hope we're all taking advantage of these few days of warmer weather we've been blessed with. At the end of last month, I attended a conference hosted by our software company, Software Solutions. We had discussed upgrading our system servers to a cloud-based server for more security as well as future upgrades for the city. We're also considering for next year transitioning the utility department onto the same software used in the Auditor's Office for better balancing procedures. I would also like to refer as an emergency $2,000 in appropriations for council legal notices to finish out the year, as an emergency fire pension appropriations, and on the written report, you'll see a third, but I'm going to be pulling fire salary appropriations and bringing it up next time around. It needs to be transferred. I just finished our revenues and emailed them to Miranda so she can send them out to you when she gets a chance. Overall, we are up 4% in our income tax for the year, so that is taking into account the safety forces levy, but pretty good month last month.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Lewis? May I have a motion for finance to be referred the appropriations for legal notices and the appropriations for fire pension?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Young, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We don't have anything from the Treasurer, nothing from the Fire Department. You have before you the Police Department, I'm sorry, we didn't get police, we got fire. May I have a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Potter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. May I have a motion to accept City Officer Reports as presented?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on standing or special committee or city officer reports.
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Busiris. This is for Attorney Gurnett. In the early part of March 2023, at the request of a local citizen, I spoke briefly with you and Mayor Reeser about the property located at 216 West Mary Street, which contains a number of unused vehicles, trash, junk, et cetera. During our talk, you stated that the city had received many complaints and that a 10-day notice had or would be issued to the property owner to clean up his property. In your April 4, 2023 Report to Council, you stated that a formal criminal complaint had been filed with the Crawford County Municipal Court pertaining to the significant violations. You further stated that it has been your experience to achieve the best results, you utilized the threat of further litigation and prosecution to effectuate change. You also stated that in the coming months, you intended to bring Mr. Grove to council to discuss ways of streamlining the process to cut down on the delays. I was just wondering if you could advise us the status of 216 West Mary Street because those junk cars and trash and all are still there. And would you expect to have Mr. Grove come to council?
I can bring him whenever. Mr. Grove would be willing to come and talk to anybody at any time. That property has been through court and it's being reviewed by the judge on December 1st to determine whether or not he has brought it into compliance with the city's regulations. And if not, then the judge has the ability to impose up to $1,000 fine and up to 180 days in jail. But yeah, it's been through court. He pled guilty to failing to abide by the city's property maintenance and yes, he has not.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
He has not fixed anything, although if you ask him, there's nothing wrong with that property. It's all in the eyes of the beholder. It is not junk. He gets mad at me when I say, you got to get that junk out of there. It's not junk. But yes, December 1, hot. But I'll bring, yeah, Gordon will come, probably not tomorrow, but next time.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
It's not junk.
All right, Consideration of Proposed Legislation for the First Time.
Proposed Ordinance 43-2023, it's from Finance. Amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 66-2022 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by appropriating from unappropriated municipal license funds the sum of $4,000 to the contractual services line item within the municipal license tax category within the municipal license subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 44-2023, it's from Finance. Repealing Ordinance 36-2023, amending and supplementing Ordinance 66-2022 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2023 by decreasing the current balance in the other uses line item by $5,118.75 within the general government category within this county sewer maintenance subparagraph with the county sewer maintenance fund and increasing the current balance in the, from county sewer line by $5,118.75 within the reimbursements category within the sewage disposal fund subparagraph within the sewage disposal fund and declaring an emergency. Proposed Resolution 229-2023, it's from Economic Development. Appointing Donna Moore to, appointing Donna Moore Young to the position of Busiris Public Library Board Trustee to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Gerald, Gerald Dolan, said appointment being for the remainder of his unexpired term ending December 31, 2023 and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to accept this as a, yes?
I don't think her name is Donna Moore.
No, Young is a typo, so the gun should be deleted.
It should be deleted.
Young is stricken?
Yep.
Thank you. Do we need to recess and get that reprinted?
We can.
We can?
We do.
Do we need to do that or was it as amended? All right, may I have a motion to accept this as a first reading?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. McKiever, a second by Ms. Sherrick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation read for the first time.
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. This is concerning Ordinance Number 44-2023, repealing Ordinance 36-2023. At the October 17, 2023 Council Meeting, Auditor Lewis requested the referral to the Finance Committee for its repealing and replacing of Ordinance Number 36-2023 since incorrect information had been given to the Law Director's Office as if it were a transfer instead of a reimbursement. At the October 19, 2023 Finance Committee Meeting, Myers made a motion to request emergency legislation to repeal Ordinance Number 36-2023 and replace it with appropriate legislation for reimbursement. The motion was seconded by McKiever and passed by voice vote. In reading Ordinance Number 44-2023, the caption refers only to repealing Ordinance Number 36-2023. Section 2 of the ordinance refers to the legislation as an emergency in order to correct the previous ordinance that was done in air. However, this ordinance does not contain the correct information for the reimbursement. Are we doing another piece of legislation?
Yes. So there are, and Kaylee can speak to this, but there are going to be a significant number of reimbursements that we do every year at the end of the year in one piece. So this was just repealing that and then we will do all of those reimbursements in one piece at a subsequent meeting. That was the thought process behind that.
Okay, because I know, looking at the letter and I know there was confusion at the committee meeting.
Right.
If you listened to the audio recording, everyone was like, what are we supposed to be doing?
So we were going to repeal and replace, but then when I had talked to Kaylee, it was, we have to do a bunch of reimbursements at the end of the year anyway, so we will stick this in with those. So this is just repealing the previous one and then we will do all of the reimbursements in one piece at the, towards the end of the year.
So are you planning on doing the reimbursements prior to 30 days? In other words, if you're not going to have, if you're not going to request legislation for the reimbursements until after 30 days from today, I don't see then why this piece of legislation needs to be an emergency.
Well, it wouldn't be 30 days from today. If you had a first reading today and then a second reading, the mid-November.
Well, the legislation is an emergency, so you're telling me you're not going to pass it as an emergency?
Well, it would be an emergency, yeah. But if you passed it as not an emergency, it wouldn't be 30 days from today, it would be 30 days from sometime in December, whenever the first meeting in December.
Correct. But what I'm saying is this legislation that you prepare as requested by Myers and approved by the Finance Committee asks for it to be an emergency.
Right.
So are you passing it tonight as an emergency?
Yeah.
Okay, but why are you passing it as an emergency? If you're telling me, or you haven't really answered the question, are you going to be doing your reimbursements legislation after 30 days or prior to 30 days? In other words, if you're not going to do this reimbursement legislation until say the second meeting in December, there's no reason for this piece to be passed as an emergency because your 30 days will have come and gone. Now, if you're planning on doing a reimbursements piece, the first meeting in December, then yes, you are going to pass this as an emergency.
Right. But if you don't pass it as an emergency, you have to wait 30 days after it's been passed.
I know that, I'm well aware of.
And so if you pass it, the first meeting in December, it hasn't been.
If you pass what?
The repeal.
Which is this piece?
Right. If you don't pass it as an emergency and you don't pass it till sometime in December, it hasn't been repealed until January. It doesn't take effect until January, correct?
Correct. But you're just sitting here telling me that you are going to pass this ordinance as an emergency, this ordinance which is repealing.
I would hope we did.
Okay, maybe I'm, am I missing something here? Okay, maybe I'm, am I missing something here?
What are we, what are we doing, the collective? Are we doing it the first meeting, or are we doing it the second meeting?
Of December?
Yes.
I would assume the first meeting. I would think so, we could get things done quickly, but I haven't sat down, and I'm budgeting right now, and everything's kind of in the air, so I would, I would shoot for the first meeting in December.
What's the problem if we pass it as an emergency, just so we can have that done? So that she can?
There is a, excuse me.
No, no, it's a genuine question. No, go ahead, go ahead.
I don't have it in front of me, but Jenny will attest to this, because she spoke at a council meeting before she became council president. The abuse that previous councils, as well as the current, have used in passing legislation as an emergency when it's not necessary. And I'm saying that if we are not going to be doing a piece of legislation for reimbursements until the second meeting in November, or December, excuse me, then there's no reason for this piece that you'll be passing tonight to be passed as an emergency as it's stated in the caption.
Okay. So that's why I asked Ms. Lewis, when are you planning to do the reimbursement legislation?
And that's what I've asked several times.
If we're going to do it the first meeting in December, then it, then it.
Right, definitely, yes.
Yeah.
Right, but if she doesn't know.
But she is planning, and that's.
Right. So what's the issue with us? I understand the overall of use of it, but in this particular situation.
That's up to you guys.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, we break back to originated committee. Proposed ordinance 43-2023 is refer back to finance. Proposed ordinance 44-2023 is refer back to finance, and proposed resolution 229-2023 is refer back to economic development. Committee reporting on legislation, finance?
Finance is favorable to proposed ordinance 43-2023 appropriations for traffic lights. And, is that what that was?
Yep.
Yeah, I guess it was. Okay, yeah, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't see traffic lights in there at first. Okay, and finance is favorable for proposed ordinance 44-2023 repeal of ordinance number 36-2023.
Economic development?
Economic development is favorable of proposed resolution 229-2023, the appointing of Donna Moore.
All right. We have reconstituting the Stormwater Utilities Board, roll call.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers absent. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Further consideration of pending legislation. Ordinance 43-2023 for the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 43-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings, and caption text, and declare emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Myers absent. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance 43-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Young.
Wireball?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers is absent. Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Ordinance 43-2023 is duly adopted. For the second, third readings of proposed ordinance 44-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings, and caption text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel.
McKeever?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers is absent. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance 44-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Young.
McKeever?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Myers is absent. Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Ordinance 44-2023 is duly adopted.
Resolution 229-2023, for the second, third readings of proposed resolution 229-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings, and caption text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Wireball.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers is absent. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 229-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Potter.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers is absent. Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution 229-2023 is duly adopted. Do we have any old or unfinished business? New or miscellaneous business? I know the mayor stated it, but the Veterans Assembly out at Bucyrus High School will have several of the county schools, local bands out there. We have local people being inducted into the Hall of Fame. It really is a good night. Everybody should go at least once. Thank you.